We'll call this special session of Carmel Clay School Board's meeting to order. Madam Secretary, we'll call please.
All members present today.
Thank you. Please rise for the pledge. Dr. Beresford, would you read us?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your father, the rich and saints, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
This is a special session of the Carmel Clay School Board to conduct some very important business for our district. I'd like to thank all of you that are present here this evening. We are excited to move forward with some new things for safety and the well-being of our students. But first, I'd like to recognize that today was our district's C4 conference. Last evening, there was a well-attended screening of a very thought-provoking movie on our education system called "Most Likely to Succeed." This morning, we had over 600 educators from Carmel and other school districts spending the day of their summer to learn from each other. This morning started with a video featuring two CCS students, one who will graduate in 2032, yes, think about that, 2032, and their perspectives on technology. That was a perfect opening for Will Richardson, who talked about Generation Alpha, children who are born after 2010, about how we do not know what will come next, how that's okay, and the difference between education and learning. So I want to publicly thank all of our educators and people that spent today connecting, collecting, collaborating, and creating for our students. Also, I want to thank the sponsors, presenters, and the committee that made it possible. Before we move forward with the agenda, I understand we have a personnel item to add to this meeting relating to a new Director of Special Services. However, to do so, we will need a motion to add a personnel report to the agenda. Is there a motion to add a personnel report and recommendation to the agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? No? Please, we'll vote in favor of adding the item to the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. I will turn it over to Dr. Beresford.
And I'd like to thank the board for adding that to the agenda. We, of course, lost Dr. Jay Arthur, who left Carmel Clay Schools to become the superintendent at Martinsville, so we're real happy for Jay, but of course, that's a loss and a hole on our team. But we went through an extensive search process and zeroed in on a wonderful candidate, and we're going to recommend here within the personnel report that Stephanie Fairchild be hired to be our new Director of Special Services. And I'm going to have Dr. Dudley just tell you a little bit about Stephanie.
Yes, thank you. Stephanie Fairchild is an educator with 25 years of experience. She earned her bachelor's and master's degree in special education from Ball State University, and she earned her Directors of Special Services from Indiana University. She has, her experience ranged from being a resource teacher, a teacher of the deaf and hard, hard of hearing, an early childhood coordinator, and for the last several years, she has been the Assistant Director in Warren Township Schools. And so, we're very excited to recommend her to be part of our team. We think she'll be a great asset and continue to help us to get better at getting better.
Thank you, Dr. Beresford, and thank you, Dr. Dudley. May I have a motion to approve the recommendation to retain Stephanie Fairchild for the position of Director of Special Services for Carmel Clay Schools?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? Any questions? There being none, we'll vote all in favor of approving the recommendation to retain Stephanie Fairchild for the position of Director of Special Services of Carmel Clay Schools. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No? Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we will move to public comment. I understand we have...
We have a report.
Oh, I apologize. I'm getting ahead of myself. We have a report first. We will move to the report. Dr. Beresford.
Thank you, Mr. Kershner. I would like to talk a little bit today about a school safety referendum and to give some background information about that. First off, let me begin by saying I wish that I did not have a need to bring to your attention and, you know, this proposal and this information about a school safety referendum. I wish that, you know, we didn't have to concern ourselves about, you know, intruders coming into our schools, but with the growing trends of violence in our schools across the United States, really in the world, and then even just a year ago, in, you know, in a school district right next to us, it behooves us to be responsible and to do all we can to keep our kids safe. So given that, I wanted to give some background information. This past session of the, you know, of our legislators downtown, they passed a school safety bill that gave schools a new tool to create funding streams for school safety initiatives. That new tool is a school safety referendum. And this went into effect on July the 1st, and the process is similar to other referendums with the exception that it can only be used for school safety initiatives. We're very thankful to legislators that went through that process and has provided this way and means for us to fund school safety initiatives. And I really appreciate the work they did and also that they opened it up to include mental health services as well as, you know, school resource officers and school safety programming. So I want to do a little shout-out and a thank you to our legislators that gave us, you know, another tool that we can do to keep our kids safe. Now, the new law permits school districts to propose and do a referendum for up to 10 cents for every $100 of assessed valuation and to take that money and use it for school safety, all kinds of different school safety initiatives. Now, we're not going to do that. We're proposing a referendum for 5 cents per $100 of assessed property value, and that would generate approximately $5 million a year. If this is approved by voters in our school community, this referendum would be good for eight years or so. I think eight years is the new deadline for that. Now, most folks, when we talk about, you know, valuation and .05, you know, 5 cents for that, it gets a little confusing. So let me give you some examples of what that would cost voters in our community. If you had a house with assessed valuation of $250,000, you'd pay an additional $65.13 a year for your taxes. If you had a house with assessed value of $500,000, it'd be $146.38. A house with an assessed valuation of $750,000 would be $232.88. So I say that just to get, to let the public know and also to inform you that, you know, what the impact would be on, you know, on the people in the community if we, if the voters choose to support and you choose to support a resolution to go for this school safety referendum. Now, the next question everybody probably has is how would we use that funding? And we'd use the funding to partner with Carmel Police Department in the city to place a highly-trained school resource officer in each of our elementary schools and also funding for two additional officers in the future if needed. When you think about us having 15 schools and that number of school resource officers, we're probably larger than most towns in Indiana. That's the size of the police force of a lot of towns in Indiana, and so there may be some needs there for more supervision or possibly even additional officers. And so, that would be our first step in that. I've asked Dave Woodward, our Student Services Coordinator, to get some information. I'm going to invite Dave to come up to the podium and talk just a little bit about some information about school resource officers, not only locally but on a national level. So David, could you share a little bit about school resource officers?
Absolutely. As we're talking about officers in our schools, we're not talking about just putting a gun in our schools. We're talking about having a well-trained law enforcement officer. All of the SROs that we would put in our schools would have certification from NASRO, the National Association of School Resource Officers. On top of their law enforcement training, they receive training on physical safety assessments, social-emotional learning. They really base all of their training on the triad. Their SROs, they mean to be counselors, teachers, and law enforcement officers. I'll throw some research at you. From the U.S. Secret Service, the Safe Schools Initiative, in 81% of the attacks on schools that they researched, someone else knew of the attack prior to actually committing it. But it wasn't reported because they were unsure or unwilling to report it. What we want to do is put another resource in the schools to assist with that reporting. We want to make sure the students build these connections with more people, and we think an SRO will help with that. Also, I want to talk about response time with regards to law enforcement. Typical response time, you could say, in a school shooting has been five minutes approximately. However, the majority of school shooting incidents are actually less than that. Now, they can go longer than that depending on where they're at in a particular situation, but what we want to do is meet that statistical average and reduce it. We want to improve our own response time. So what we're talking about is putting a resource in our schools to connect with students and to reduce the likelihood of violence on top of improving our response time.
Thank you, David. I've always said that the value of a highly-trained school resource officer is not simply security, but it's having one person in the building whose sole responsibility is school safety. And that is an all-hazards approach. It can be anything from trip hazards to security of doors, weather. We're much more likely to have a tornado issue than we are a school shooter. But all hazards, all different types of threats there are in the world of safety, you would have one person dedicated to continuously look and how to keep our schools safe at a very high level. The other thing is what David mentioned is just the relationships that our school officers bring, and really, they change the atmosphere of the school. School students, if you ask students, you know, about our school resource officer, they will tell you they feel more ease, more confident, less concerned about safety issues because of just the presence of a school resource officer. And I'll also go off to, on just a little story, is that I was talking with a school resource officer in a hallway one time, and a student came walking up to us and asked him where he could buy his homecoming tickets. Our students felt so comfortable, and they're so part of the fabric of the school, that they felt very comfortable to come up to school resource officer, and of course, he told them, you know, go around to the bookstore and pick up your tickets. Those relationships that the officers make with students is something that lasts not only, you know, in their school years, but also, I think, has a benefit going forward. And if you've ever been to a Carmel football game, after the football game, you'll see just mobs of kids standing around our school resource officers. They're like rock stars. So the benefit of having someone whose sole responsibility is school safety, someone who's there to defend and protect every student and staff member in that school, and someone who's been part of the fabric of the building, is something that I don't know that you could put a price or you could put a value on that, how important that is. So that would be the most significant piece of the school safety referendum and what we'd spend, you know, a lot of the resources on. Additionally, we'd use the funding to bring more mental health programming to our students. This would include funding programs for our school's social workers, possible future expansion of our school's social workers and school counselor teams. I could just share a couple of facts with you that Carmel Clay School's social workers conducted over 160 suicide assessments during the 2018-19 school year. I think you're seeing a national trend that we've never had higher instances of anxiety and depression in our young people. You all know that we started the Stop It app this year, which is a two-way reporting system where kids can, really anybody in the community can give an anonymous report and, you know, about any concerns they have. Well, we had a total of 4,841 Stop It activations, and with 1,042 total reports submitted. And out of those 1,042, 82 of those reports were students reporting mental health issues, concerns about another classmate that may be suicidal. And so, you know, it's, you know, like I said, it's a national trend, but we're also seeing that right here in the halls of our schools. One of the alarming things about that trend is that not only are the numbers going up, the ages of students who are affected by anxiety and depression are getting younger. And so, we have to take a proactive stance to try to get, you know, those supports and those program, that programming in to help our young people. Dave, do you want to talk a little bit about mental health services and some of the things we've got going on?
Absolutely. So as we're talking about adding SROs and adding mental health counselors, what we're really talking about is adding to our comprehensive school safety plan. When we talk about the preparedness cycle, you're talking about prevention and mitigation and response and ultimately recovery. We talk about response because our SROs and improving their response time can help there, without a doubt. But let's talk about prevention. How do we stop these things from happening in the first place? And I think most people are in agreement that that's with mental health counselors. Some national statistics, again, from the U.S. Secret Service study, most of the attackers who had committed a violent attack in school in the study that they conducted, over 78% of them exhibited suicidal ideation prior. And that doesn't mean that everyone with suicidal ideation is a potential school attacker, but it means that those people who did, did exhibit these suicidal ideation prior, and they could have had the assistance. Nearly all the attackers exhibited concerning behavior prior to their attack. That's 93%. That includes violent statements, essays, they exhibited clear feelings of despair, and didn't get the assistance that they needed. Most of the attackers had difficulty coping with loss. That's 83%. That could also be addressed with mental health assistance. I think the key to all of this, as we talk about a comprehensive school safety plan, is getting students, identifying the students who need assistance, getting them the assistance that they need. And then, the collateral effect to that is we're going to reduce the likelihood of violence in our schools. And at the same time, we're going to address the response. Through all of this, we're still going to update our safety plans. We're going to have a very well-trained staff and student body, and it's going to be part of this comprehensive school safety plan, but this is going to be a major part of it.
Thank you. Along with what I mentioned about our school's social workers, we could also use the referendum to contract out for in-school mental health programs. This might give parents an option of having their students see a therapist at school rather than leaving the school to go to appointment off-campus. It may also help us support students that may not have insurance or have other means, you know, to get the help that they need. So this could be another important, you know, layer in our school safety program and also just assisting our students, our student services. In the district I was prior to this, used this model of contracting in, you know, those types of programs, and had a very positive result with a lot of students. So, and finally, and as Dave mentioned, this funding could support our professional development training of our staff to improve our school safety and reduce violence in our schools. So really, the key cogs that the legislators put forth for this referendum would work very nicely and would really, you know, bring these additional layers of school safety to Carmel Clay Schools. And these are essential, and they will benefit our students and the families that we serve. Now, we know we're on a tight timeline to work through this process. We had that conversation in a recent board advance meeting that we had, and it's a pretty aggressive schedule. And about, what keeps ringing in my ears is what Mr. McMichael said at that meeting. He said, "If we have students who are struggling or in need of support now, we need to act now and get them the help they need." So it is a short time schedule. It is a, it's going to be, you know, a big swing, but we can't wait, you know, in order to support the kids in the way, the best way that we can. So you asked the question, why is this referendum important? And to kind of sum it up, I'll say that we're seeing a continuing trend of violence in our schools across the nation and here in Hamilton County. It's imperative that as we continue to add additional layers of safety to our, layers to our school safety program, that we use all the, you know, all the tools that we have, and the school safety referendum is one of those tools where we can create funding streams in order to, you know, to get these supports in place, get these programs in place. And our community expects our school safety program to be at the highest level possible, and this funding will make that possible. It'll get us the opportunity to make these significant advances and add these layers of safety to our schools for our students' benefits. I can't talk enough about, or at least give a lot of praise to our Carmel Police Department because they take student safety very, very seriously and have been great partners to work with. We've been in communication with the Chief of Police, and I know that the communication's gone on with the city as well, and we just look at this as a great opportunity to, you know, to serve and support our kids in the best way possible. So that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Beresford and David, for a very informative report. I think it's very important to point out that they're consistent with our guiding principles of students are at the center of every decision and our responsibility to responsibly manage our fiscal resources. So with that, we will move to public comment. I understand we do have one member of the public that would like to speak. The school board recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and the importance of allowing members of the public to speak regarding corporation matters. However, the primary purpose of the meeting is to conduct corporation business, and public comment will be limited. When you approach the podium, please state your name and your address when you start your comments. You will have three minutes. The green light will come on when your time begins, the yellow light when you have 30 seconds left, and the red light when your time is up. The one speaker we have this evening is Jennifer Goodspeed.
Jennifer Goodspeed, 13531 Kingsbury Drive, Carmel, Indiana. This is my first time actually ever speaking on a board. I mean, I usually just sit and listen. But first and foremost, I want to say thank you for being creative, looking for opportunities, obviously, to provide the best for our students. School safety is a huge issue, but it's not necessarily only a local issue. It's a national issue. So I have to actually respectfully disagree that I am disappointed in the legislature that they would put this type of national issue on the shoulders of local public schools instead of funding it like they should for all schools at the state level as part of
Thank you, Jennifer, for your comments. Next, we will move to school safe, back to the school safety referendum. May I have a motion to take action on the school safety referendum?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor of...
Discussion.
Oh, you're right. Discussion. Dr. Beresford already gave a report. Do we have any questions from the board?
Katie.
Can you let us know how many SROs we currently have and how, where they are located and who they serve?
Yeah, we currently have seven school resource officers, four at the high school, and then we have one at every middle school. And then, the middle school SROs will also visit the elementary schools. They're all assigned a number of elementary schools that they will visit and serve as well.
Now, my second question is, for the mental health program, which is one of the things that I'm most excited about, will this also, we are the largest employee in Hamilton County, and will this also serve our staff members?
The design of this would not be designed for staff members. This would be a student program only. We do have, you know, wellness programs for our employees, you know, through our benefits and the Wellness Center, but this particular funding and this program will be specifically for students.
Pam?
Yes, I see in the referendum that this would also cover salaries for MSWs, and would this be covering the salaries above what the education fund is already paying, or is this going to all be covered with this referendum fund?
Yeah. Yeah, a lot of the funding pieces of that, we're not really getting down to like a granular level of specifically about what that would be. Right now, you know, our, our social workers are funded, you know, through their employee group and, you know, through our human resources department. Any decision to be made about that would be, if we use referendum money in order to do that or to, you know, to hire more social workers, we would, that would be, the school's safety referendum side, that would just be to cover the additional costs since the current costs are already in our budget.
Okay. I know that the MSWs are not part of the bargaining unit, and their salaries have been lower than counselors, so I'm excited to see that we might be able to give them a higher salary at this point.
Yeah, it's important to be competitive, and most of our neighboring school corporations are, you know, the pay is a teacher, school counselor pay, so there is a competitive nature to getting high-quality people, and this may help us in that area.
Leila?
I know this particular referendum also permits us to use funds for building improvements associated with safety and security. I know we already have some money allotted and put to the side through Capital Projects for that. Are we going to be tapping into these resources, or have we accounted for all of our updates?
I'll defer to Mr. McMichael for that one, since he is the master of all things buildings.
Thank you. Currently, the projects you're referring to were included as a part of the bond issue that we sold recently. So for the most part, what's immediately happening with some entrance work is coming out of that bond issue. We have from time to time used, now what was Capital Projects fund, now is operational funds for that purpose as well. So we can continue to do that, but it could also come from this safety referendum. The funding source is the same. In both cases, it's from, those are being paid from property taxes. It's just which vehicle is used.
Our current proposal, though, is mostly human, human resources, more than physical safety-type things. It's hard to predict eight years from now what will be available, and so, but we'll always, you know, have an open ear to what's best practice and what kind of technology or whatever physical safety, you know, opportunities we have. We'll always be monitoring that.
My second question, I know SROs are very highly trained and skilled, and they have to have a certain personality to work with our students. It's not just any police officer. They can come in and serve as an SRO. It takes time to find the right fit. What does that look like long-term? Are we going to hire everybody at once, or are we going to not necessarily require the full five cents on the dollar the first year because we won't be spending that much at the first year because we don't have SROs yet?
Well, I'll answer the first part, and I'll let Roger answer the second part, but it would be unlikely that we'd be able to hire 11 officers in one year, you know, once, if the referendum is approved and the voters choose to support that. It is key to have highly-trained officers and a good fit. We're not, you know, we'd much rather have a high-quality program with high-quality individuals than to have like security, you know, security people. You know, so that's going to be a priority. Also, you've got to understand we're working with Carmel Police Department, and they may have, you know, five officers that are interested in being school resource officers, but you can't just take five officers off the street because they have to serve and protect the community. So there's definitely going to be some linkages and some processes that are going to have to happen, you know, over time to do that. And so, your second part of your question was about drawing funds and that sort of thing, so I'll pass it off to Mr. McMichael.
Thank you. I would say with this referendum, I would emphasize that the five cents is the maximum, and it is with our operational referendum as well. A difference that I see here is everything we're talking about here, for the most part, is new. So we're not frankly quite sure as to what the future might bring. We don't know how long it would take, will take to employ the additional SRO officers and so forth. And so, there's a couple of possibilities. One is that we would tax to the five cents, and to the extent we were not in, say, the first or second year, if we did not, you know, weren't in a position to use all the funds, of course, we would then be building a cash balance, which might be preferable so that as we move forward, we would have funds available. So because other, the alternative would be is you would not tax, and then you other, the alternative would be is you would not tax, and then you would, you would have the next idea that you wanted to do, but you might have to wait a year to get the funding. But over the course of the eight years, we know a couple of things. One is we, we would be limited to a five cent. Secondly, it's, these funds have a specific purpose, and so we would have no reason nor would we just accumulate the funds for no reason. And so as we approach the end, if we felt we had excess cash, then the other alternative would be to lower the rate because, as I said, there would be no reason just to collect taxes and not have any use for them. And so, again, we're certainly in this process, not sure which way might be the best way to go.
But we do have that flexibility.
We do.
Great. Thank you.
You do have the flexibility. And as I mentioned before, the tricky thing about referendums is they're seven, eight years, you know, most of them are seven. This one's eight years. So it's really hard to predict what your needs might be in eight years. One of the reasons we're doing this safety, we're proposing the safety referendum is because, you know, when we did the previous referendum in Carmel Clay Schools, we didn't think in terms of putting an SRO in every school building. And then, you know, the shooting happened in Noblesville, and the world turned around, especially in our local area here. So, so the key thing is to take a responsible approach and, you know, keep ourselves flexible in order to serve our kids and our families the best we can.
Pam?
Yes, I have one more question. So when we add this referendum, then we'll have four funds. Will it be the education fund, the operational referendum fund, the safety referendum fund, and then the operations fund?
Correct.
Correct? Okay. So it'll be, okay, thank you.
Dr. Beresford, could you give us a timeline? So I know tonight you're recommending this resolution to the board. What are the next steps? What's the future look like?
Yeah, actually, it's outlined in the resolution, but the first immediate thing that happens, has to happen is we have to deliver this. Once we sign off, everybody signs off on the resolution, we have to develop, to get that to the Department of Local Finance downtown. They are the ones who approve the language that's in the, that's in the resolution. They do have the power and control to make us change that language. That language could change. Once it's approved by them, then we have to go to our local governments, and it'll be like the county clerk, just really all the units of government, and so that that's aware. And then we get to get to the county election board and get that information to them so we can get on the ballot for November the 5th.
There are some grants that are currently circulating from the state to, I guess, our safety grants, and I know they help cover some of the cost of the, of an SRO. Could you speak to what that quantity is? I mean, I think the public might think there's other funds out there that really don't exist, so.
Yeah. Yes, the grant you're referring to is $50,000 a year, and we've received that for a number of years. And you're correct, it is used to cover part of the cost of the current SROs that we have.
Lynn?
I don't have additional questions, but I do like to take the opportunity to say thank you for putting this together. And for, from my experience at the National School Board Association annual conferences over the last two years, I can clearly see that our district is high-performing, but will face the same challenges as other districts across the nation. So this is a great opportunity for us to further to give more for our district and for our community. And thank you.
Well, I will echo that. I'd also like to thank the board for their questions, and I'd like to thank Dr. Beresford and Roger for all that information. I'd just like to clarify what the action item is. It is the 2019 School Safety Referendum Tax Levy Resolution, the details of which are for eight calendar years. We will impose property tax rate that does not exceed five cents on each $100 of assessed value. The funds can be used for employment or compensation of school resource officers, programs to address specific mental health programs, and programs for professional development for teachers, administrators, and employees to improve school safety and reduce violence. With that, do I have a motion to approve the resolution regarding the school safety tax referendum levy for the November 5th, 2019 election? Second? Thank you. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? No. Motion carries. Is there anything else to come before the board this evening? No. With that, I will accept a motion to adjourn.
So move.
A second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor of adjourning the special session of Carmel Clay School Board, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Meeting adjourned.